This meeting is being recorded. Would you please rise as Dr. Marlowe leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, law, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us virtually this evening. Please note that all webinar community member participants will remain on mute during the meeting unless they have put in a request to speak during the public comment. Comment period. Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Gray?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Marlowe?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
DeKellik?
Nam?
Here.
Buck?
Here.
That public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved?
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous? Unanimous roll call vote, you say nay or I abstain? The motion has passed. Now we move on to several presentations for this evening. The High School Students of the Month for February are Michaela Cupstas and Luke Spangler, jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Lions Club. The Middle School Student of the Month for February is Abigail Wallish. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lemon County Rotary Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. Congratulations to all of those students. Do we have our student board rep up for presentation? So now we go here for my student-
Okay, so hi. So this is what student council has been up to recently. So to start off with the King of Hearts dance, even though the dance was canceled, we're still going to have a King of Hearts court and raise money for charity. This year, the teachers are going to select the court. Student council is going to make a video with the court's bios and like information and stuff to give them more week recognition. Next week is the King of Hearts Spirit Week. So the Monday is Meme Monday, Tuesday's Touch Time Tuesday, Wednesday is Async Thursday, Thursday is Superheroes Thursday, and then Friday is, of course, Blue Bowl Friday. Seniors want class wars, and we are trying to come up with a fun but social distance reward for seniors. We are making cards for the staff for Staff Appreciation Day. We will also be giving them candy with their card. We bought gift cards to gift to Spirit Week winners, and we are going to be making a race to success. Bullet to the board. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Island. It's great to hear about all of the- Our next presentation is by Brad Remick and Diane Martin.
Yeah, I'm waiting. Does Kirk have the slides up?
Yep. We-
Oh, that's loud.
Yes, we have them. They're up, thank you.
All right, so-
Leanne, can you see the slides, or you want me to talk you through it?
Slides, so that's okay, I'll just-
Okay, he's on the first slide, where it's his total new construction costs.
Okay. I'm just gonna bring them up here on my screen, sorry, and then- Oh, there we go, now I can see them. Thank you, Kirk. All right, so the total new- What we're gonna go through tonight is some of the options that we've considered and we've discussed before we came to the conclusion for the $53 million bond that we have on the agenda for tonight, so- You wanna just go to the next slide? There we go, thank you. So, the $53 million for total new construction cost bond that we have presented was for the elementary school construction project with $48 million for that, and also for athletic facilities for $5 million. So that would be the $53 million total with two bonds, each repaid over 30 years. To date on this project, working with Crabtree and Fadavia and all the presentation and the research that we have done, $820,000 has been spent, and we intend to use some of the bond money to reimburse this school district for this and to cover these costs that have been spent to date. Next slide. One of the other scenarios that we had originally looked at was a full elementary model, and that was a $35 million cost, and this was full upgrades to each of the existing four elementary buildings. We still wouldn't be achieving the education equity that we had desired, and we would still have the variance in class sizes because of the way it would be spread out over the four different buildings. And the next scenario Gary's gonna talk about, and that's with the, we have been asked the question, what if we would do nothing? And Gary's gonna talk through this, but we are at a point that our buildings are coming close to their end, or in many cases, they've already exceeded their life expectancy on many of the major mechanical systems. So that would be the necessary elementary improvements, and Gary's gonna talk about those in the next two slides.
Yeah, this is a tough question, and Director Marlowe asked it, I think, about a couple of months ago. You know, what happens if we do nothing? And, you know, through discussions, doing nothing, while that's an option in terms of maybe not planning things, we have things that are on our last legs. I asked Mason to go through and basically take, let's look at the things that he felt were going to need replaced or repaired over the next five years. For instance, our HVAC system is no longer under warranty and is past its typical lifespan. And that's a very costly replacement, you know, closer to the millions of dollars than it is to the hundreds of thousands. And I asked Mason, can you give me an estimate? He said, no, I can't give you an estimate. We'd have to have professionals come in on some of these things and give us estimates, and we'd have- The number of things, if you look at this, the fire sprinkler systems, the HVAC systems, the fire alarms, the entrances are particularly a secure entrance at East Hanover at Lickdale, the sunken area of the building at Fredericksburg that is on that one wing on the end that was an addition that is now sinking. All of those things would need, we would need to bring people in, and we would need to get estimates on all of those things in order to figure out what that cost would be. So, went a little bit different route, and we pulled up the 2018 feasibility study that Gilbert did. Gilbert had an option on there of what it would be to maintain the existing elementary schools without the flexible instructional spaces, just addressing the other needs. That was just one of the choices. At that particular time, they estimated that at $24.5 million. Now, I will tell you that the cost per square foot back then, I did the square footage of the elementary and used that to calculate their cost per square feet. It came out to be $148 per square foot. However, right now, based on the November figures that we had gotten from Crabtree, that they had in November presented $180 a square foot. So that $24.5 might actually be on the light side, if you look at it from today's standpoint. So, but we did have projections, we did have a bond projection of $25 million, which was very close to that $24.5 million. And if you go to the next slide, Kirk, I just wanna talk a little bit about the, what that doesn't include. And it doesn't include those flex- flexible instructional areas. I will tell you that from an educational standpoint, this is something that I do believe in. I think if we, I sent you that survey from our vision, and you talk about students achieving their potential and having the ability to pursue their passions. Well, part of that is putting them in situations where, and I listed some things from a 2019 study, but honestly, you could go to pretty much any educational journal right now, and they talk about student choice and flexible expectations, flexible instructional areas, collaboration, these are just some of the things from that study. Collaboration, they, better ability to be creative and innovative, communication, problem solving, and experiential learning. So many things that you can do as you create spaces that are more conducive than, you know, an 850-square-foot classroom. It also doesn't include the athletic facilities improvements. And finally, if we do not build a building that we can take sixth grade in the DAO out of here, when we go to do something with this building, we actually have to build on, because we don't have enough- While projected enrollment goes down in about six, seven years, as it comes through to the middle school. Over the next three or four years, if you remember Dr. Witham talking about the next several years, we wind up in this situation where we have some big classes in the elementary school that we run out of space here, and we have to look at it in either a trailer situation, or they suggested if we're not going to move sixth in the DAO, an actual addition, and if you, you probably don't remember the picture, but the picture was an addition coming out of near where the cafeteria was, and then connecting to the back end where that auditorium entrance was. It doesn't include any of those things in that $24.5 million. So, just wanna be clear that we, when we look at the three options, you have the option to build the elementary school, you have the option to remodel or renovate the four existing elementary schools, and you have a do-nothing option, but the do-nothing option really isn't do nothing, because you still have to replace and repair some things. In addition to that, it does not take care of some of the things that we were shooting for. So I think the next slide, Leanne's gonna show you the numbers and how that works out. Oh, hey Kirk. Is there any way we can minimize the picture or move them? There you- Yep, there you go. That works.
Are you guys good now? You can see it correctly? Okay. So, in our current bond, what we currently, in our current budget, what we had planned for the bond repayments is the $1.23 million of local effort. And this slide, what it does is it compares in one glance the three different scenarios that we've just discussed. The annual bond payment shown here on that first line across there, the annual bond payment for $3.43 million for the new elementary construction. What we did was I just looked at, once we get out of the graduated repayments, and that's an average of what our higher payments would be. So that's shown across there in a line. But what we plan to do with the bonds is to have graduated payments after we pay off our current debt. We can be creative, and that's where Brad Remick and PFM come in to kind of help us plan out how we wanna repay it so that it best suits the district. As you can see in the third row here, there's an annual savings that we're projecting for the new elementary construction, the athletic fields. And we would not have any savings with the other two scenarios that we discussed this evening. And then the bottom line is the annual cost, once we realize those savings, and the savings will only come into play once we're about three years in. But like I said, we have the graduated repayments so that we're not fully paying that $3.43 million that we're estimating on the top line until we get out of the first nine years or so, where we're having the lower payments. So the annual cost there going across compares them with the savings, and also once we get into the full payments for each one. Through the three different scenarios. So as you can see, once you realize the savings, the new elementary construction and the athletic fields, the $53 million comes in below, the $35 million is a full remodel, and it comes in about equal to, slightly below the $25 million scenario that Gary just discussed.
Can I ask a question? When we're talking about the annual cost, what's the period that we're talking about? We're talking about an equivalent period of time, right? Are we talking 20-year repayment? This is the annual cost over 20 years for all three of those scenarios?
It would be a 30-year.
30-year?
Yes.
And that's 30 years for all three, right?
Yes, like so, it's comparing a similar repayment structure for all of them, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the bond payment, Leanne, just to chime in, is an average over those 30 years. So that 3.4, we won't pay the 3.4 right away, and we won't pay the 3.4 or around that number until the 1.2 comes off. And the others could be structured similarly as well.
We can get creative with the structure, you know, what best suits the district and what our objectives are for the budgets of the next couple of years, and a long-term look at that. And that's where Brad comes into play. He allows us to be pretty creative, and they work with us on that. And in the PFM booklet that's available, it's online, and I believe I had to email it to the board members. That goes in and shows the entire repayment schedule in depth there. Okay. Can we go to the next slide, Kirk? Okay, so you have all seen this type of information from me in the past, when I presented my budget numbers. So this is just the additional revenue that would be experienced by the district with a 3% and a 3.8% tax increase. And I included a column here with the additional cost, the average homeowner, just because we always like to see that number. So as you can see, that's over on the far right with the $74 out of 3%, and then a 3.8% is a $94 increase to the average homeowner in the district.
Leanne, can you remind everyone why you put 3.8 in there?
Yes, sure. The 3.8% is the maximum that the state would allow us to go to with our index. So if we wanted to go past that, we'd have to qualify for an exception at this point.
And that's important, because keep in mind, you know, the one downfall to building, I don't wanna say one, there's always more than one, but one of the downfalls to building is, we start building, we borrow, we don't have operational savings in the first two years. It's not until we move into the building that we have operational savings. So you wind up having to make a bond payment, but you don't have, you gotta find that revenue somewhere. Go ahead, Leanne.
Okay. And we go to the next slide, please, Kirk. Thanks. And this is just an outline of the timeline and the process of what we'll be going through. So tonight, you received an update on where we're at with the bond and why we chose the scenario that we did. And tonight, you would be approving an authorization to work with PFM financial advisors for us to prepare everything to move forward, and you would be board approval for bond parameters in March. And then we would do an online auction on March 10th or later for the bonds, and settlement would be April 15th. And if you want any, if you have any questions on the process or what's the next step, Brad is on here to answer any of those questions.
Questions? Okay, Leanne, I don't hear any questions, or is that the last slide?
It is the last slide for me, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, now we move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Messinger.
Yeah. Just wanted to give you an update on long-term planning. I actually got to work on that for a few hours today. I am about halfway through taking all the notes from the groups and compiling that into one document. It's kind of exciting to see it come into shape. And I anticipate having that done, a draft of that done in the next couple of weeks. Wanted to talk briefly about flexible instructional days. As you know, we're gonna give our first shot at an asynchronous day on Monday, assuming we don't have a snowstorm before that. I do wanna say, I had gotten a few questions about, well, why aren't you doing synchronous? And while during COVID I could do synchronous, we actually were approved by the state, as you know, for flexible instructional days before this craziness, or in the midst of this craziness. And one of the things that the state really emphasized, and I had to submit a plan, they actually gave it back to me and I submitted again, because they really wanna make sure it's an equitable situation for kids that do not have the internet, have internet. And to have a synchronous day for them is a problem, because those kids can't access it. Special education was a big thing, and kids without the internet was a big thing. And, you know, we don't have enough hotspots to give out to every single kid that doesn't have the internet in our district. So when you start to, I had a discussion with the gentleman, because I was trying to figure out what they were looking for, because they just kinda send it back and say, well, you have to make changes, but they don't, they're not specific. So I contacted him, and it's really almost impossible to do a synchronous situation for kids that don't have the internet. So, and I was hesitant to get used to a synchronous day, even though we have COVID, and then next year not be able to come back and do it. So we're practicing the asynchronous thing, working with teachers to get them in a situation- There's a lot you can do there. We actually did some sample lessons for the state to get approval. But it is gonna be a little bit of a learning process. Fortunately, we've had practice because of COVID, so I think we're set up to go. I will- So if I know about the, if I know about the snow, then we will try to do an asynchronous day. So if Wednesday morning I find out, yeah, it looks pretty good, the snowstorm's coming on Thursday, we'll attempt to do an asynchronous day, and we won't have to, we're out of snow days anyway, so we wouldn't have to, you know, find a day at the end of the school year. So we're gonna, we're gonna take a shot at that. But that's the, that's the update on that. And then finally, I just wanted to draw attention, we have a bunch of winter activities that are going on right now, but I just wanted to recognize the bowling team, who is undefeated right now. Do they have four seniors or that kind of- And they've, are they finished? Do they have one more?
They have one more league game next week.
One more league game, and then if they win that, they go through the whole season undefeated. And I think they have some good, a good shot at some postseason accolades as well, but I wanted to recognize them. The other teams are going strong too, but bowling's a little closer to the end of the season. And they're having to draw attention to that as well. Let's get into my report.
Thank you. Is there any old business for discussion this evening? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to the public comment period. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening via email or online form. Mrs. Martin, did we have any requests for public comment?
No, we didn't.
All right, thank you. Okay, then if there's no public comment, then we move on to the board action on the consent calendar. So it's one through 21 on our consent calendar. And all of these were discussed at the meeting-
How they gonna say you can send yours in?
May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. We do have an informational item, Item J, the updated winter paid and volunteer coach lists are included with tonight's agenda. We have four items on our four discussion for board action tonight. Dr. Messinger, would you like to present these?
Yeah. Number one is the dump truck that I talked about. And in all honesty, I'm not convinced that we will actually be able to purchase the dump truck in this fiscal year. Anyone that is looking for dump trucks, they are not available. We've contacted multiple places and are having difficulty finding them, they won't even wear them at this point. So it may be spring till we get a lead on one. On a DB July till we have that and pay for that. But we're gonna shop for it if we can find one, and there's a maximum cost on there. But we do have, you know, the one we currently have, as you know, I had emailed that information from DB Fisher, who works on it with the Hydraulics League, and there's also quite a bit of rust on the bottom side that it's just a matter of time at this point, but
I think it's okay if we do all four.
Okay. The number two is just an FMLA leave request from one of our high school, one of our high school instructional assistants. Number three, we had a position for an FMLA leave advertised for a substitute. We found a name on Monday, and we added Hannah Phillig to that, to the agenda for the classified substitute to help us with our custodial work, and finally, a student settlement agreement.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Items 1 through 4 as presented?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Dump truck, what, where would those funds, where would those come from?
Well, they've come out of the maintenance fund at this point. Right now, they're under budget, over budget in some specific areas due to COVID, but under budget as a whole. We would take it from there.
What will we do in the interim if we are not able to purchase the new dump truck soon? What will we use in that interim?
That's a good question, and I'd have to check with Mason about a plan for that. I mean, anything that we can repair, we try to keep repairing. To get through winter, the major function of it during the winter is the salt. And spreading the salt in the summer, it's more the mulch and the ground things as they're pruning and that kind of thing. But right now, it's mostly the salt. I have to look at borrowing one, if maybe, but I'll ask Mason and get back to you. Good question.
Are there any other, is there any other discussion for these items? Hearing none, this is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative. The motion has passed. Now we move on to our reports from our representatives. Our first is from the Career and Technology Center. Director Klein, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, I have two things I wanna point out. The first is, at our last meeting, the Joint Operation Committee reviewed, and we had a nice clean report, so everything looked great. The other thing I wanna bring up is tonight the CTC is holding a virtual, during COVID, so they decided to hold a virtual open house tonight. It's going from 6:00 to 8:00. And that's all I have to report on. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Director Klein. Moving on to our second item there, that is our IU 13 representative-
I don't have anything specific to report tonight, thank you.
Thanks. And then our Legislative PSBA liaison is Director Sappel.
Nothing to report this time.
Okay, thank you. We do, we just got word that we did have a community member that did wish to make comment this evening, and that is Mr. Andrew Murphy. Mr. Murphy, when you are given the opportunity to speak, you will have four minutes. Please announce your name and address before you speak. Thank you.
Andrew Murphy, 1828 Black Bridge Road, Anvil, PA. Think it's a little useless speaking after you guys voted on the dump truck, because why are we spending $62,000 for a dump truck? Because was it in the budget last year? Basically, why not, you're gonna, you're lowering your footprint to two schools instead of six schools, so won't you have more equipment than you need because of all the buildings that you're getting rid of? You can rent from Eagle Rental, you can rent a dump truck for three hundred a day, a thousand a week, or three thousand a month. We're not using the dump truck every day, are we? So you can save some of the money there. If you do it with a dump trailer instead, one hundred a day, three hundred a week, or eight hundred a month, significantly less cost, significantly a lot more cost savings. When you build this new school, because pretty much at the Act thirty-four hearing, they seem to make it a, sound like a done deal, you're going to go to, down to two libraries from six libraries. Are you reducing staff? What about, same thing with the cafeteria? What about the maintenance? Because you're having less buildings. And you guys are talking about the annual increases, what the increase from this year is from last year for the mileage on these new budget for seventy-four dollars or ninety-four a year. What's the increase over four to five years cumulative? I remember a director saying it was the cost of a tank of gas. Well, if you raise it a cost of a tank of gas every single year, which this is a lot more than a cost of gas unless you have a Hummer, that over years is a large amount of extra you're asking the taxpayers to pay. You're going from a twenty-five million dollar project of what was proposed for repairs to forty-eight, actually fifty-three, because now you just tossed in the athletic facilities, which I thought that was in the original numbers. But you guys just keep spending money and not cutting. But why buy the truck when you can rent it? Because you're predicting in two years to have two buildings instead of six.
Mr. Murphy, does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Murphy. This is Brooks Say, the solicitor. You bring up a good point. I think there was a miscommunication about receipt of your request to speak prior to board action. So therefore, it's my recommendation to the board that you consider Mr. Murphy's comments, which were on items that were on the agenda for voting today, which means the board was to take official action only after it received public comment. Therefore, it's my recommendation that the board consider the comment and revote on both the consent agenda as well as the action items, and those will be considered the official votes of the board. So I'll pass it over to Dr. Buck.
Thank you for pointing that out to us. All right, so we will first do the vote for our consent items. So again, our consent items are items one through twenty-one on the agenda as listed. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented? May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. And now we will do our revote on our discussion items. Those are items one through four on the discussion calendar. May I have a motion to approve the discussion items one through four as presented?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed.
They just pass everything. They don't care.
I'd like to announce a couple dates to remember, so as direct, as Dr. Messinger pointed out, February fifteenth, on Monday, we will have the flexible instruction day. And then we have our two board meetings in March. The second is the committee meeting, and the eighth is our normal voting meeting, and those are at six thirty. I'm sorry, I, no, I announced that incorrectly, I apologize. March second is our committee meeting, March ninth is our general voting meeting at six thirty. And I would like to announce our exec, we have an, the board met an executive session tonight, February ninth, immediately preceding this meeting to discuss personnel issues and confidential legal student information. Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. This meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.